All right, it is four P M. We will call to order the special meeting of the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority this October twenty second twenty twenty four. I'd ask if you would please call the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Short?
Here.
Chair and Score.
I am here. You're also obliged to join us for the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready? And again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will enter into a period of general public comment. Any member of the public can address the solid waste management authority on any matter that is on or off our agenda. And you'll be given three minutes to make a comment. Any general public comments this afternoon? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to consent. We have four items on consent. The minutes from the special session of Tuesday, September third, claim ninety nine fifty two and the amount of six thousand dollars. Claim ninety nine fifty five in the amount of sixty eight hundred twenty seven and eleven cents and a budget transfer twenty four twenty five in the amount of six thousand five hundred thirty eight dollars. Any public comment on anything on consent? All right, close public comment. Board?
Move to approve.
Yes, second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair and Score.
Yes, very good. And your consent. See that Dominic Noel is here, so we put you up front, sir, so you can come and give us our update. And if you really want to stay for all things solid waste, you're welcome to, but we're sure you have plenty to do.
Sometimes it's interesting.
It sure is. Yeah, we talk trash rack.
All right, we got the the fourth quarter report ready for the fiscal year of twenty three twenty four, I believe. And then we ultimately towed fourteen automobiles in that fourth quarter. We didn't do any travel trailers or RVs. And that comes back. We have that cow recycle grant with funding through that. So we're pulling out the RVs and trailers with that funding. And that leads us with nineteen thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars available as of early October for towing vehicles. That's a pretty good amount for dealing with cars. We'll be set pretty good for a while.
Let's get her down.
All right, any questions?
Yes, how's it going with the closure of Gabe's yard? Does that make your this this area of your responsibility more difficult or?
Definitely concerned about that. We're kind of waiting to see if there is going to be any legal dumping of that nature. I have seen some appliances and stuff pop up, but it hasn't been abnormal where I feel like it's they can point to that. So far, so good. Definitely a concern.
With towing of vehicles, A one is able to take them pretty easily, or is that?
Yeah, so there's the tow companies have some resources in Oregon that will come down periodically. They can pick up cars and they also work with A one, so we're good there for now. I hope A one doesn't close. That would be problematic. But we're doing all right there, too.
Good deal. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Tommy.
Thank you.
All right, we will move right along then. Item number three is directory reports.
So so I have to acknowledge that I was gone on vacation for the better part of this period. And so Kira drafted the acting director's report that's on agenda item three point one. We had our annual household hazardous waste collection event on September twenty eighth. We had two hundred and twenty seven vehicles. And although we tried to get the word out that businesses need to come in on the prior Friday, we did not get any business participation this round. The marine flare collection event is coming up on Saturday, November second. Again, appreciation to Kira for organizing that. She also went down to Humboldt County to walk the docks to let people know about this event. Any of you who have recreational boats that have marine flares, please mark November second on your calendar as this is a fairly rare collection event for those marine flares. So very much interested in getting those out of your boat sheds and expired ones off your boats. If you have any questions about that, please give us a call at four six five eleven hundred. Kira, do you have anything else to add about that event?
I believe we'll be joined by members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary out there. So if you guys want any information. Also, when you do come to the event, as long as supplies last, you'll receive a e-flare complimentary. It can be the last flare you'll ever need.
Excellent. And I'd also like to give a shout out and thanks to Bev Knoll, who with the Coast Guard Auxiliary has essentially tried to champion a better way to manage marine flares for as long as I've known her. So I really appreciate that effort. And it really she's a great example of a citizen activist on that front. Regarding landfill, next month, there's going to be a lot of activity trying to gather the water samples for the constituents of concern monitoring, which is essentially the same routine that we do, but much more elaborate and much more water sampling involved. So it takes a lot more time to make sure that that happens. Anything else you want to add on that?
Just that that's starting to roll forward. It's been in negotiations between our engineering and water boards to know the parameters. And so we're going to be able to get on that this at the end of this week. So finally.
Excellent. So on September twenty fifth, we had the scales recertified. Of course, that's really important because it's involved in just about every transaction we do. And we take very seriously our obligation to make sure that we are accurate in our charges. Unfortunately, on September twenty sixth, someone brought in a live healthy rooster. And so it's an opportunity to reiterate that we do not take live animals for disposal. There's a number of issues about that, but if you have an animal you don't like, it's it's not ready for disposal. So that's as long as as it is alive. So that was an unfortunate incident. We hope doesn't get doesn't come back. And then we are also hiring refuse site attendants. We plan on doing interviews for that open position this Thursday. With that, that concludes the acting director's report unless I missed anything that Kira wants to add. Okay, sounds like we're good.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so moving on to the financial reports, treasurer controller's report, because we had a longer gap between the meetings, several of these have two reports back to back. But our balance sheet shows that we have two point six million in the bank and along with hundred and ninety eight thousand for last month's rent, so to speak. The AR aging summary once again shows that Kathy's doing a good job keeping up with the accounts. And anything that's over ninety days has been turned over to collections. Looking at the monthly cash and charge reports, you can see that we're now ending the summer months, so our revenues are slightly going down, but we're still well ahead of budget. So our authority revenues from the transfer station are sixty two thousand ahead of budget and our revenues from the franchise fees are seven thousand six hundred ahead of budget. So we're nearly seventy thousand dollars ahead of budget in terms of revenue at this point in time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Any questions for Director Ward on finances? Okay, let's move right along then.
Okay, moving to six point one regarding the collections franchise. In discussions with the task force and the Talawadani Nation, essentially, they've requested, as you can see in the attached email there on item six point one, they've requested that we look for another location for the bins that were behind the Smith River Post Office. They were available twenty four seven and were continued to be dumping concerns. And thankfully, we were able to make a little progress on that. Would either of you care to approach the podium and give us an update?
Ted, this is a trash dumpster and a recycle dumpster or?
No, we we do not have a just trash dumpster, so it's just a recycling dumpster there, but it does get dumped on with non-recyclable items.
So after our meeting, we were able to find a location that they had offered to us and spoke to them at the Smith River Water Water Board. So they agreed to allow us to move it into their empty parking lot that is completely fenced and they're going to open and close the facility course as well. So it's a lot better situation and we're hoping that's going to kind of curb that illegal dumping situation out there. So that's pretty many. That's going to happen November fifth.
Very good.
As it is now, we're just always dumping garbage, right?
Right. Yeah, it has been recycled years.
Right. There's just too much of the company inside it. More wish cycling.
Okay, really glad to hear about that. So November fifth, the bin that's currently behind the Smith River Post Office is moving across the street from the Community Services District. It's behind the fence and it will be available during daylight hours only. So it's the after that, it's going to be locked behind the fence and there are plans for surveillance cameras.
Very good. Great solution.
And under the franchise agreement, Recology is obligated to provide these services, but it's also up to them to secure the location. So we really appreciate Recology's efforts to do that.
All right, any questions? All right, go on to section seven.
Okay, it was a very busy legislative season. Our our priority bill, AB twenty nine oh two, got across the finish line and got signed. So we're very happy about that. And thanks for the board's stalwart support on that. And I really do feel that our encouragement of to to assembly member would to move that bill was was influential in this process. Unfortunately, SB ten sixty six, which addressed marine flares, was vetoed by the governor. That was disappointing, but there I did attach his vetoing statement as part of the package. AB SB twelve eighty was also passed and that was signed by the governor. And that will by twenty twenty eight, that will ban single use propane containers. So we've been working on that front for some time. There was an effort initially to ban it because we wanted to move towards reusables. And the governor did not sign that one and basically said, give me an EPR bill. We try we worked to try to develop an EPR bill. That didn't pass. And so we're back to the ban, which he finally signed. So sometimes that's how the process works. Other bills that got passed that are relevant, then I'll give you a very brief summary on SB ten forty six establishes the state to produce a program E I R. Mainly it's essentially it's a big here's all of the potential impacts associated with building a new compost facility. And then everybody has access to that generic document and tailor it to a specific project, but it really can speed up the permitting process associated with establishing those new facilities. And under SB thirteen eighty three, we anticipate many new composting facilities being built across the state in the next three years. AB twenty three forty six adjusts some of the procurement requirements under SB thirteen eighty three, so that will affect the county and city to some extent. SB seven oh seven creates an extended producer responsibility program for clothing and textile. And that includes supports for reuse and repair of textiles through thrift stores. SB eleven seventy five will require CalRecycle to revise the regulations with respect to low population or elevation based waivers under SB thirteen eighty three. So I think this is mostly going to be impacting urban counties that have rural areas such as Mendocino County or San Diego County. And they'll want to treat those rural areas differently than they treat the urban areas, but under current regulations, that's a little difficult to work. So SB eleven seventy five requires CalRecycle to revisit those right those regulations. SB eleven forty three added reasonable materials to the paint care program. As you may or may not be aware, Paint Care is the Extended Producer Responsibility Organization managing our discarded paints. Used to be that our household hazardous waste collection events were often referred to as Paint Day by a lot of people because that's mostly what we saw. And we had to bear the cost of recycling those with the establishment of the Producer Responsibility Organization of Paint Care that takes responsibility for paints. They were taking latex enamel, water based, I'm sorry, water treatments and and lacquers. But aerosols were not included, paint thinners weren't included. And so as a person was cleaning out their paint shed, we could take some of it, but not all of it, which was always a little awkward. So this bill essentially adds the reasonable materials that people might have in the same paint shed to the paint care program. So that expands our paint care program, and I think it'll be a little bit more useful and effective for people. AB six sixty updates the requirements and uses for quality, safety and sell by dates. So these are the dates that are on different food containers. There was some confusion about what those meant and whether or not sometimes they were there for the grocer's convenience as to when they were going to move their stock. Sometimes they were there with real health impacts and that that you need to eat this by a certain date. But because we are looking at redistributing those foods, it's really important that those labels be a little bit more clear. So that's what that bill does. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
All right. Any questions? All right, very good. Let's move along.
So this well, seven point two is I gave a handout for, but essentially our contract with DDR hauling is expiring at the end of the year. And so that's Dave Mason, former code enforcement officer, but he helps us with cleanups. And sometimes when we really as a backup, we also can use him for some maintenance activities out at the landfill. So several years back, we crafted this RFP and he got the contract. But we're very happy with this working relationship and would like to extend this agreement. But this is the time where we get the board's guidance on that, whether you would like us to extend this agreement or go out for another request for proposals to try to hire a different contractor. The handout that I gave you was from Mr. Mason indicating that they're interested in extending this agreement. They like this working relationship. But because of the changes in prevailing wages, they do need to update their some of their pay rates. And then they would also like to add a provision where either party could terminate the agreement with thirty days notice. I think both of those things are acceptable, so I would recommend that we be directed to negotiate an extension of that agreement and bring it to the November or December meetings.
Okay. We have consensus. All right. Clear that we have consensus to move forward with that?
All right, thank you for that. So our last public agenda item is the State of the Agency Report. During a prior closed session, as we were discussing approaches to evaluating the director's performance, this was the format that was recommended for a revised version of the State of the Agency Report. You may or may not recall. Previously, I've given several years back, I used to give State of the Agency Reports that were essentially culled from the monthly director's report. So it was kind of a thick document that just reiterated what you'd already seen. So that wasn't that useful. Prior to that, I gave a list of all of the different responsibilities the agency had, including the discretionary activity, and that was about twelve pages. So also not very useful. So hopefully, this is slightly shorter and a little bit more useful. But I the reason why I say those things is because there are a lot of responsibilities that the agency has that are not anywhere on this document. And yet we regularly do them. So but with that said, I'll go over this new format for the State of the Agency Report. So starting with achievements, this past year, EBA Engineering completed the documents to update our permit for the Crescent City landfill, which we have to do every five years. And we were a little late in submitting that, but it did get approved. Also, we were able to negotiate updated titles, job titles, descriptions and adjusted staff pay ranges and steps in response to the state increases in minimum wages. Regarding grants, we have several grants that are ongoing. We have used oil grants and block grants for supporting beverage container recycling. But in addition, we had some discretionary grants. We've received now two grants under SB thirteen eighty three supports from CalRecycle. We're winding up the first of those and the second of those will help us do the community meetings that we're planning for the coming year. We've also worked with the California Product Stewardship Council. And so, for instance, that marine flare grant that we were just talking about was was working with them on that. So challenges in the coming year ahead, we do have this community planning process that's intended to result in a prior prioritized list of facilities and programs to manage organic materials from Del Norte in ways that reduce our greenhouse gas impact. As this is a larger community planning project, we'll consider things that are above and beyond what SB thirteen eighty three requires. But it will be focused on how we will manage our organic materials differently. And included in this discussion, for instance, will be the possibility of of developing a northern transfer station. Because as we look at developing new facilities, all of the potential facilities that the board has discussed should be on the list. Whether or not that gets pursued, it should be considered as a potential priority project. Other things that are current, you've also discussed briefly at this meeting, the closure of Gabeham Pone's metal recycling and reuse facility on Northcrest. And we are seeing an increase in dumping of large metal appliances and metal scrap throughout the community. And it so it's important to remind everybody that we do receive metals at the Del Norte County Transfer Station every day. It's a significantly reduced fee compared to solid waste. And for those of you who are Recology Del Norte customers, you get two free bulky item collections per year. A refrigerator or freezer or dehumidifier would count as two of those. But for Recology customers, you have a washer, you have a dryer. You can give them a call and for no additional charge. You can give them a call, and for no additional charge, they'll pick it up from your house. So their number is 464-4181. And we continue to get calls from customers who aren't aware of that service. So we want to remind everybody that that is part of your trash subscription service. We also have the upcoming phase out of fluorescent bulbs. And so those changes may change the demand for the services that we have through the Del Norte County Transfer Station. There are ongoing challenges associated with the unhoused population. So whatever strategy Del Norte County and Crescent City develop, disposal and recycling will be part of those facilities. And so we need to continue to stay engaged in those discussions. And it's important to recognize that, for instance, we do support Del Norte Mission Possible, which is doing a lot of valuable community service and cleaning up materials from some of the encampments. And we're currently supporting them to the tune of about 20 grand a year. So that's, that's not insignificant, but we view it as a very important community service in a way of keeping materials off the landscape to the extent we can get that done. Also, Dominic Mello, as county code enforcement officer, has started to use the voucher program we were discussing earlier this year. And we had a blighted property that was overgrown with vegetation, and we've recently used that as a model about how the voucher program might work. So we're hoping that this might be, continue to be an effective tool in addressing solid waste and recycling-related blight concerns in the coming year. Legislative changes will continue to impact Del Norte's recycling and recovery program. So, for example, the bottle bill was expanded, which is a great thing, but it also included things like wine boxes, which are not recyclable. And so that causes some consternation among everybody, because of course, we'd like to get everything that has a deposit on it actually recycled, but it kind of needs to be recyclable from the beginning. Just because you've slapped a deposit on it, it doesn't make it recyclable. So there is some transition that will continue to occur there. Similarly, we're also seeing, so for instance, the product stewardship program with respect to pharmaceuticals has resulted in drug takeout back bins at most pharmacies. Unfortunately, those have to be regularly serviced. And so if they're not serviced, those bins remain locked. And having the bins locked doesn't really help anybody. And so as these new programs are established, it's important that we monitor them and make sure that they're actually delivering the services that they're intended to do. Because having a take-back program requires that it, you be able to take stuff back to it, right? So some of the facility challenges we have coming up, as we completed the five-year review for the landfill, we need to do that for the Del Norte County Transfer Station. We're anticipating using the same contractor for that service, but we'll start to get that ball rolling in the coming month. And then also, it's just important to recognize that the Del Norte County Transfer Station first opened in 2005. And so it's, has about 20 years of wear. So everything's getting older, it's needing a little bit more maintenance. And we do have ongoing security concerns, and the cameras don't help repair the building. But just for overall context, and in that context, it's worth noting that the authority's one vehicle, a forerunner, I think it's like a 1987, is aging. And so probably next year's budget will include budget for purchasing another vehicle. So looking at this, staff can recommend the following goals for the coming year. As we feel that these are all achievable and appropriate to what we've got ahead of us. We want to complete the five-year permit review for the Del Norte County Transfer Station. We want to initiate a series of community meetings to develop strategies to address organics management obligations under SB 1383. We have contractors to help us with that process. We want to continue participant, participation as, as members of the Rural Counties Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority. I currently serve and have served for several years as chair of the ESJPA's Technical Advisory Group. And I also serve as their, as the ESJPA's representative on the SB 54 Advisory Group, which is overseeing the implementation of a product stewardship program for single-use packaging and foodware. We also recommend that we continue to assist the ESJPA staff and contractors, because they've recently received a grant from Cow Recycle to develop a zero-waste plan for rural areas. And regardless of how one might view zero waste, what this will do is it will lay out the infrastructure development in rural areas for managing solid waste recyclables and compostables for the next decade or so. So it definitely is to our advantage to participate in those discussions and to look at what facilities and improvements might best serve our community. We also recommend as a goal to continue to monitor and advocate through affiliated organizations like ESJPA and the California Product Stewardship Council and Californians Against Waste regarding regulations and legislation that may impact programs and requirements. And finally, upgrade equipment as needed to enable hybrid in-person and web-based meetings using the authority's conference room to reduce travel expenses and to increase meeting convenience. So those are six recommended goals. We could add more, we could take some of them off. Open to discussing how you'd like.
All right. Or have any comments regarding the presentation for State of the Agency goals set forward by our director? All right.
I'll consider that consensus, adoption of those goals.
Having been through all the iterations that you described, I would say that this is probably as good a way of doing this as any. Thank you, Director.
Thank you for the board's guidance.
All right, we are at the end of our agendized items. We are going to retire to closed session for a bit, and we do not anticipate that there will be anything to report out of closed session, but we will come out here and adjourn when we are finished. Thank you, everyone, for participating.